Management District. For Friday, September twenty four. Twenty twenty one at three o'clock P M. Uh, roll call, roll call.
Director Roberson.
Here.
Director Adams.
Here.
Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Malik. Let me, I will check to see if he showed up on the attendee side in just a minute.
Yeah, I'm looking and I don't see him there.
Director Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Paul.
Here.
Chair Edwards.
Here.
And. We'll just note for the record that Director Malik has not joined the meeting yet.
Okay, let's stand for pleasure allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution, which we stand, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, next thing on the agenda. Will be, uh, do we have any additions and corrections to the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. Okay. Action item.
Chair Edwards, I see that Director Malik has joined the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is the action item. Public comment will we receive? Please leave me your comments for three minutes. Okay, General Manager, what's the first action item?
Point of order, Chair, should there be some comment?
Go ahead.
No, should there be public comment first?
Mr. Chairman, it's a special meeting. You don't have to take general, uh, public comments on the agenda. You do have to take public comment on your action item.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I seen that too, Director Riley, but I'm going with the script. So I think they trying to keep me in order. Thank you, General Counsel. Okay, General Manager, action item.
Yes, this is the action item to contemplate approval of an amended and restated water purchase agreement, uh, proposed agreement or draft, uh, currently. I do have a PowerPoint that I want to walk us through, uh, if you'll bear with us, um, for the benefit of the public and some of the attendees as well as, uh, ourselves. So wait for Sarah to put that up.
One minute, please.
And by way of introduction. Pure Water Monterey Expansion represents a new permanent water supply, which, you know, of course, we've been agonizing over since nineteen ninety five. With the failure of the new Los Padres Dam project, um, there's been various fits and starts on additional water supply projects. Where we stood, you know, a year ago, year and a half ago was, uh, the desalination project had been approved in September of two thousand and eighteen by the Public Utilities Commission. At the direction of our board, we relooked at some of the assumptions, uh, as well as, uh, we had some kind of late learnings during the, uh, the P U C process. About the potential for Pure Water Monterey Expansion. Throughout most of the P U C process, expansion had not been contemplated or evaluated. Um, but as things drew to a close in September of eighteen, the prospect for Pure Water Monterey Expansion was, uh, increasing. Um, so Sarah, where are we?
Yes, I'm trying to toggle back through my screens.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it. Give me a second. Directors, are you able to see, uh, the, the PowerPoint?
No.
No?
No. I got it, Joe.
Okay, go ahead, Sarah. There we go. Terrific. Okay, next slide. So the objectives of a new water supply can kind of be broken into primary and secondary. The primary objectives, of course, are to lift the C D O, uh, and the moratorium on new meters. And meet the growth needs of the community, but secondary objectives include replenishment of the seaside basin. Possibly water for others, you know, like Marina Coast Water District, Seaside Muni. Uh, Water Master has, uh, indicated a need for protective water levels. And certainly there's the prospect of building a drought reserve. Next slide. There's been some disagreement, if you will, over what the needs of the community really are. And we recognize that there's some dispute, uh, over the data and the pace at which we will grow and what the long-term needs are. But our supply and demand study indicated that growth in the region using the Amberg Regional Growth Forecast, which is this yellow line. Signals, uh, less water need than was indicated in the application for the desalination project. And that while D cell would certainly meet the need and provide, uh, quite a bit of drought reserve. On the Pure Water Monterey Expansion would meet the need for, in this case, uh, over three decades. Now, if the community grows twice, twice as fast, well, then these lines would intersect in about fifteen to seventeen years. And of course, if we grow slower, uh, you know, it'd be out to forty years or more. Next slide. So we looked at three different options the community would have to do Pure Water Monterey Expansion. And I just want to walk you through those briefly. Uh, option one would be one where the district itself finances without Calam, no water purchase agreement. And we would keep a portion of the water for our purposes and sell the remainder to others. And when I say to others, again, that could be seaside muni, it could be the water master. Um, recognizing that as of right now, the water master has no plan in place for physical infrastructure to do protective water levels.
And no money.
And no money.
Thank you.
To do. Next slide. So the pros of doing it ourselves for ourselves is we could replenish the seaside basin in both replenishment, drought reserve, uh, building up a source of water for other purposes. But if we did so, it's highly likely that Calam would, uh. Dust off the D cell project and continue to pursue that. It wouldn't lift the C D O because that's an obligation, uh, on Calam. It would not end the meter moratorium unless Calam participates. There would be no water for growth unless Calam participates. Uh, Monterey One Water would not be likely to approve if they felt that the community's objectives, uh, those primary objectives I listed on the first page. Were not being met. That is lifting the C E O and the meter moratorium. Our revenues would be on the hook and we would have to do a prop to eighteen revenue raise, which I don't think would be a problem, but it's always contentious. Next slide. So that brings us to option two, where we would finance it without a Calan water purchase agreement. We would reserve water for Calam and for growth, and that's why you see the blue bars kind of starting small. That's the first year's incremental need in new water. Building each year, in this case, following the Amberg Growth Forecast. You know, we could certainly. Do a bigger buffer so that we're reserving even more than the growth forecast, but this is just conceptual. We would sell the remainder of the water to others, which would help, uh, mitigate the impacts on district revenue. But we'd really be relying on the Coastal Commission to look at this option as a alternative viable supply. Standing there ready for Calam to come. And then the Coast Commission ostensibly would deny the coastal development permit, and then we would be the likely, uh. In, you know, engage in a water purchase agreement at some time in the future when that happens. Next slide. So the pros of option two would be it could lift the C D O, it could end the meter moratorium. Monterey One Water is more likely to approve because it meets the community's objectives. There would be water for growth and we could replenish the seaside basin. The negatives, of course, are that we would just be relying on a future action of the Coastal Commission to, to deny D cell. And if that did not happen, then you would have two new sources of water, two revenue streams burdening the same constituents. We would have revenues on the hook and we'd still have to do a prop to eighteen. So that brings us to the third option. And this option, option three is Calan buys a hundred percent of the output and there's a water purchase agreement upfront. And as you can see, all the bars are now just a hundred percent of sales to California American. Next slide. So the pros are, at least based on the numbers I showed you, uh, in the supply and demand chart, there would be sufficient water to lift the C D O, uh, to end the meter moratorium. We would gain Monterey One Water approval to, you know, to build the project on their land. They would own it, of course. There's sufficient water for growth. There's water to replenish the seaside basin and there's no, uh, Monterey Peninsula Water Management District revenue that's committed. So that takes us then to our negotiation on the water purchase agreement. Which meets the needs of option three. And the issues that we had with the water purchase agreement between, oh, May eleventh and today, kind of fall into these five categories, performance guarantees. A, a request that we would coordinate and support for D cell should, uh, we fail to deliver on our promised, uh, company allotment of water. That's the old section twenty E discussion. Early on, there was talk of liquidated damages so that the, the public agencies would have more quote unquote skin in the game. That we, um, would have actual calculated damages for shortfall. We originally got those damages out because twenty E was satisfactory to the company, but twenty E was not satisfactory to us. So liquidated damages came back in. Uh, the first time it came back in, it was, uh. Why widely possible, it was, it was much more broad than what we originally thought because we were just focused on two events of default. And we'll talk a little bit about where we ended up with that. There was some concern about the, uh, including the original base project performance start date and delivery start dates. Because we, we had defaulted on meeting those dates. But we felt that that, the, the default had been cured, but we needed to clarify that. And then finally, there was an issue on stranded costs, which was in the previous draft that was section eighteen, paragraph six. Next slide. So on performance guarantees, this was really not much subject of discussion with our board, with you all. But I did want you to, to see that the far column on the right is what Calan originally asked for, and they were asking for more. Then the original water purchase agreement on a proportional basis. And that was due in part to their concern that, uh, without D cell as an immediate backup, they wanted, uh, tighter performance guarantees. Our position was. That it should not be tighter. It should be, that they shouldn't be any different than the original contract. Proportionally, so scale them up based on the, the expansion. So the last two columns are where we ended up. Our three-year guarantee is a company allotment of, of the full capacity of, uh, the base project and the expansion. Which is what they asked for. The two-year guarantee is eighty percent of that, which, where we ended up is better than what the company originally asked for. And then the one-year kind of minimum guarantee, uh, is proportionally the same as the original contract. And significantly below what the company asked for. And then from the district perspective, this last one is very important. The operating reserve is basically the insurance policy if there's a, uh, an outage at the plant. And they had requested an amount that would eventually accumulate to a full, uh, company allotment or a one-year guarantee. The district pays for that. And we felt that it was a very expensive proposition and that it was out of line, the level of risk that, um. That the project. Uh, somebody Fran, I think.
I'm fine. Where are you?
Uh, can Fran, can you?
And can you mute? Oh, she did.
And so we did end up with a combined, uh, operating reserve based on the same proportions, uh, of where we were with the original contract. So we feel that the public agency's interests were well represented in the performance guarantees. Which then takes us to some of those other issues. So the coordinate and support for D cell, the section twenty E section, which was both unpopular and then determined to be unlawful, that we could not bind a future board. Has been deleted. Liquidated damages was converted to, uh, delivery shortfall payments. Conceptually, it's the same thing. It's a penalty for underperforming. But it was limited back to the same two events of default that the original, uh, section twenty E language was built on, and that's. A failure to meet three consecutive year guarantee or the two consecutive year guarantee, which we felt was, um, much more appropriate. The original start date defaults were footnoted as no longer a basis of default under the agreement. Which gives the protection that we were looking for, but the stranded cost language, uh, has been left unchanged in this document. And so you have a red line version. That red line version is just the changes related to the August eleventh version that we looked at during the August sixteenth board meeting. Next slide. So what we, we are asking is that you consider approval of this proposed amended and restated water purchase agreement. Authorize the board chair to sign it once there's P C approval, subject to any non-substantive changes as determined by district council, because, you know, the P C may ask for something. If they ask for substantive changes, then of course we'll bring it right back to this board. And that concludes the, the presentation.
Thank you, General Manager. Board, any questions for the General Manager? Go ahead, Director Ralph.
Dave, in your, um, cover memo, you make the reference to it's not clear what process will be used to get P U C approval. What's the, what's the expectation if we don't really know precisely what's going to happen?
Yeah, I think the expectation is, um, that an application will be made to the commission, uh, with a request for expediting. Um, and, and the reason we say it's unclear, we put forward the concept that it wasn't even necessary to take the agreement to the commission. Because a lot of water purchase agreements are just deemed to be accepted and then fall into, you know, balancing account. System for changes in price over time with escalation and so forth. Because some of the amendments are more significant than just using the old contract and increasing the, the company allotment. Then it, it may be that it needs to go through. The company is going to look into whether it can be done through an advice letter, which avoids an application. The remedy for our complaint at the P U C would be agreement on a water purchase agreement. So if the commission, which hasn't acted yet on our appeal, if they determine to use the complaint process and say, uh, we're not dismissing it. We will, uh, review and agreed upon water purchase agreement, then that would actually expedite things because that would be, um, kind of the quickest formal action by the commission. I don't think we've got high hopes that, that that will happen. So then the other option would be that, uh, the, the company makes a formal application that gets reviewed. It could be a hundred and eighty days. It could be, uh, longer. So what we are, agreed to attempt to do, we haven't looked at any language yet, is like a one-page memorandum of understanding between the three parties that says. In this proposed form, we agree that we will sign it if approved by the Public Utilities Commission. So that then we as three co-parties to the agreement. You know, all agree that we'll agree. Yeah, so your, your action, should you, uh, adopt and approve this is public. Monterey One Water will review it on Monday. That's public. But there's no public commitment by Calam to say, hey, we'll sign this thing. And so we really do need the assurances of the company that. All this arduous process will get signed when the time comes so that we can start spending money, uh, in good faith. And so. You know, obviously, um, we, we'd love to be able to sign the agreement itself, but if we're waiting for P C approval, then we can't sign it until it's approved. So. You know, it's kind of that, that problem, but if we have an agreement to agree, then we can start spending money. You know, I think the timeline is approximately thirty months from. This approval to completion, uh, plus or minus, uh, you know, a couple of months. So we can do design, getting into bid documents and, you know, continue with the project while the P C is deliberating, uh, under the, you know, the. Strong belief that they'll approve it as is. Or make minor modifications that will be palatable to everybody.
Uh, go ahead, Director Adams.
Is there ever a scenario where we would begin some of the work prior to receiving the P C's approval?
Yeah, then I probably didn't make that as clear as I mentioned, but that's exactly what we want to do. But we would like to get a, you know, a three-party M O U that says, we all intend to sign this if this gets approved by the P U C.
Great.
Yep.
Go ahead, Director Malik. You on mute, sir?
So what will it take for, um, Calam to? To sign that M O U and how long would that be?
You know, I would imagine less than. Three weeks, you know, we need to draft it. I think we, the district took on the drafting duties, which will happen, you know, next week, and then we'll probably have some language to discuss.
So this, this could be another long-drawn process with Calam?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think it's just, um, artfully getting the right words that, you know, they. They can't commit in, in their minds. They can't commit until the P C says it's okay. And so, you know, we just need them to say, if the P C says it's okay, then we will commit. Otherwise, you know, we're just stymied. We can't, you know, we can't spend any money. We can't move forward.
So what you're saying is, um. If all three parties sign the M O U, we can go ahead and spend the money. And proceed as, proceed as though, um, the P U C is, is going along with us.
Yes.
Okay, any, Director Riley, you got your hand up?
Yeah, if, if it's going to take some time for the P U C to act, uh, I assume, are we buying into, uh, any modifications that the P U C might make? Cause they have the discretion.
I know, I know. And that's, you know, that's the one risk I believe that we're taking on that, uh. There's, there's always the risk that they say no. Um, you know, I talked to the Public Advocates Office, um, and they said that the risk of the P C saying no is. Almost zero. Because you either need to build water or buy water to. Provide service. And so, you know, they're all on board with, the, the P C's all on board with, uh, the provision of service. I mean, that's one of the, the key things is, you know, safe, reliable, affordable water. So you don't want to, as a regulator, they're not trying to stymie growth on the, in the community or. Keep the company in a state of, uh, cease and desist order, you know, regulatory constraints.
Mr. Riley, I, I just want to chime in here. I, I, I think the risk of the P U C actually, uh, denying authority is extraordinarily remote. I think it's more possible that the Public Advocates Commission decision would add process, some reporting, some other formatting in terms of visiting back to them to. Keep them apprised by the, uh, the, uh, where, where everyone is. So I think it's more process rather than, uh, a, a red light.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Director Anderson and then Vice Chair.
Yes, I've got a question. It's not like the first time I read this, but this, this just popped out at me. Probably not a big deal at all, but it, this is in, uh, section, uh, twenty and it's, uh, number C five. So, and this is about, you know, the, the, um. Agreed to amounts of water that will get delivered. And it just says. Delivered in quantities at least equal to the company allotment. Does that mean? That we'll probably be delivering a little bit more each time than allotment because it's because the, the punishment is, you know, substantial, so.
Right, well, you know, we. We, we hope to always have more capacity than, uh, the company allotment. But the obligation is basically under this particular one is, um, it's a, it's a three-year default provision, which means every. Year of three consecutive years, we have to deliver five thousand seven hundred and fifty acre feet. Um, if there was an outage in the plant, um, that's not a force majeure, you know, some active nature or a plane crashing into it. You might, we might underperform in a single year. But then if we get back on track the next year, then the three consecutive years doesn't apply. To, and this is, this is one that, you know, we talked quite a bit about, and this is where maybe our, you know, my ears and, and Paul Schudo's ears may have been, um. More focused on the practical rather than the political, because we said, oh, this will never happen. So then that old twenty E section, which was related to this particular, uh, event of default. Would never come into play. And so that coordinate and support at first to us didn't have any meaning because it's a, a very remote event. In the next one in, uh, six, that's the failure, failure to deliver basically eighty percent of the fifty-seven fifty acre feet. In two years in a row. So again. It could happen in one year, but if you get back on track in the following year, then you're away from potential default. And so it's got to happen two years consecutively. And so, you know, we kind of looked at the engineering and, and said, well, what could happen? That would lead you to not perform for, you know, three years in a row or two years in a row at the, the lower standard. And from an engineering perspect, perspective, we really couldn't think of any. There's always the issue of, uh, a change in business practice where, um. There's no longer any irrigation return flows and so that the Blanco drain or the reclamation ditch source just goes away. Uh, luckily in the, uh, amended and restated water recycling agreement, so that's between Monterey One Water and, uh, Monterey County Water Resources Agency. This project has the right of first refusal on the, the water that's needed to produce the thirty-five hundred acre feet. And then the twenty-two fifty acre feet for the expansion has about, uh, eleven or fourteen identified potential sources of water. So right now we're feeling highly confident that we have more water to produce what the company allotment is than will ever be needed. But you can envision, you know, like a change in business practice, the irrigation goes away or, uh. The County Water Resources Agency could take an off-ramp under their agreement and then the Salinas agricultural washwater goes away. But we take a combination of a lot of those different sources to go away. If we had a catastrophic failure of all the membranes and, uh, for whatever reason. Manufacturers had, uh, supply chain issues or something. Then I could see that happening, but not for three years in a row. Um, you know, it's just, so. Then I could see that happening, but not for three years in a row. Um, you know, it's just, so it's, it's one of those things where you look at it and. There are risks and that's why they're all enumerated here. Um, but I think they're really remote.
Thank you. Got it.
What? Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yes, this question may come under the heading of wishful thinking, but here goes. Uh, in terms of uh. Thinking towards the future of lifting, getting the moratorium and new connections lifted someday. Would a request to get that process started, to get that request in, have to wait until pure water expansion is operational or? Is it possible to start the process as earlier?
Well, yeah, and I noticed Steve Westhoff at the State Board is on, listening as an attendee. We've had that discussion before. Um, and, and keep in mind, when the company was working really hard to move D cell forward. They had made arguments to, to both the state and others that they don't think pure water expansion has enough water. We're highly confident that it does have enough water to lift the C D O. So probably. You know, six months before completion, um, maybe a year before completion, but definitely while we're in construction. We'll start that process. The, the problem is the way the cease and desist order is written. It's really the company's obligation. To provide the evidence that there will be sufficient water to lift the cease and desist order. So it will become a, a, a team effort. Um, as an applicant for the extension of the cease and desist order. Um, we feel strongly that our voice can be heard and should be heard. Uh, we also have rights as a. Uh, you know, as an aggrieved party, if you will, um, to make applications to the state. But the, the onus is on, as written is on Cal M to apply, but we will be, you know, as a, both a partner. If you approve this, as well as a regulator, we'll be pushing that before the project is complete. So that the, the board would have enough time to act. Quickly with the completion and delivery of the water. The worst situation would be where the, the state board says. Well, I'm not highly confident. Let's wait and see if you actually produce the water for a full year. Okay, now you've shown us. Um, but because this is an expansion of an existing project, I think we would argue that, look, we've already got a performance record. Now we've just added new trains and uh new injection sites and, you know, it, it should be easier. If the state board then turns around and approves. We still have to lift the meter moratorium, which is a, uh, I, I think it's a tier-two advice letter. It might be tier-one advice letter. I can't recall, but it's an advice letter process, not a long drag-out application through the Public Utilities Commission.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mayor Clyde, do you have any questions before I start?
No, no questions. I do appreciate the excellent questions that have been asked so far.
All right, sir. Thank you, and I do too. Okay, the first question I got is on page seven of the agenda. I think you covered it. It's on our page seven of the agenda. That red line, did we cover that already? I think you talked. A little bit about that, G M. Was that covered? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah, I've tried to cover it at kind of a high level, but yeah, you can certainly read the, the, the red line version shows the, the specifics.
Okay, next one is on page ten of the agenda. The red line version. Did we hit that? It'd be the first red line.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm in the red line version, but I, I'm not in the board packet.
What?
Uh, page eight of uh thirty-four.
Definition of replenishment assessment rate?
Yes.
Yep.
That thirty-five hundred acre feet, is that the penalty we, we will be paying?
That is correct.
Okay, how did we come up with that? That sound like what the first amount, the first project supposed to begin. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's a, a proxy for, you know, if water was available, what would water cost? To replenish. Um. So it's, it's kind of like in a construction contract where you define liquidated damages, um, you know, per day at, at a certain level. So it was agreed to um say that this is a proxy for the, the cost of an alternative water supply. So the harm or the damage if we failed, you know, chronically failed to deliver in the three-year uh. Event of default or the tiered test. If the company was to be in, in dispute resolution, they would say, hey, we've been harmed. Well, what's the harm? Well, we had to run out and buy makeup water because these guys failed to deliver. And so this is an assumed price per acre foot of makeup water, if you will.
Okay.
Can I add a comment to that?
Go ahead.
Um, through the Water Master uh, the data, I looked it up. The current rate is three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, which is about two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, three thousand two hundred and sixty, that's the current rate. It's capped at thirty-five hundred. I think that's a good provision to have it capped that way. I don't think the cap is too high. I don't think it's uh unlikely, and I don't think it's likely that it, uh, if, if it's gonna happen. The existing cost rate and the future cap limit. Are, are close, closely tied together, I think, in, in sheer numbers. And so I, I say, I think it's a reasonable uh comparison between the two numbers or. Alternate use of two, you know, either number.
Okay. Uh, my, I think my next to the last one is on page eighteen. Of the agenda and uh it will be page sixteen of the thirty-four for the general manager.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we might as well get to the bad news. Okay, that last paragraph, not nineteen, but we, above nineteen. What are we talk, what are, what are we talking about there?
That is the uh, on the PowerPoint, the slide that I said was unchanged. This is the provision about. Stranded cost recovery that we did not successfully negotiate out of the agreement. So this is um, in effect saying, and it's, it's different than coordinate and support. This is, will not oppose. Um, so if, if the company at some point decides to uh either abandon the D cell project. Or uh seek partial recovery of expenditures to date. Um, that's the provision that says we as the public agencies will not uh. Take an affirmative opposition in front of the P C.
Okay, and that last, neither the district, neither the agency is currently taking a position. I think you mentioned that. Related to efforts to attain C P U C approval to recover and raise the company costs incurred. Related to the M P W S P after August thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Is that clear? Now, if they go forward after that date.
Well, which, which they have, they, they've spent, okay, they, they have spent money after that date.
After that date, can we say anything? Do that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, basically what we've said, and, and for those folks watching, the reason it says prior to August thirty-first. And, and this goes back to some previous conversations we've had with you directors. Um. You know, the, a previous board was in support and we did do filings and we did get into settlement agreements and. Generally, we were pushing D cell forward until two things happened. Uh, one is uh our board changed in, in uh its support for D cell in general. And we also figured out that we could do the expansion and that it was about one-sixth the cost and still get all the water that we needed. Based on the data that we uh kind of put together around August of two thousand nineteen. So if uh. You know, those two things changed our worldview, if you will.
Okay, so we can't say anything above that date?
Right.
We can't, okay. Now, my next question, how much is that stranded cost up to today?
Uh, up to today? Up to that date.
Yeah, uh, just give me estimate if you got it.
Yeah, so up to August thirty-first, it's approximately eighty-nine million. Um. The Monterey Pipeline, you know, about fifty million uh is not in that eighty-nine million. Uh, and then through current. With uh, with I think some allowance for funds used during construction. Think of that as interest um. On the money that's already been invested. I think it's about a hundred and twenty-five million through today. Give or take.
Okay, thank you. If no other questions from the board, I'd like to take it to the public. And since it's a hide item, we give them the three minutes.
And it's a popular item. We have twenty-one attendees on the attendee side.
Oh, yeah, I know, so. We give them the three minutes that they can use less. I appreciate.
All right, so if you would like to make public comment on item number one, uh, please raise their hand, or if you're calling in, uh, push star nine. And Sarah, uh, you'll be sharing your screen there. So that way, okay, good to go. Uh, the first person that I would like to invite is Rudy Fisher. Rudy, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you. Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, I want to agree with your general manager. Um, that this, that you should go, go forward with this. Go ahead and approve it. Let him sign the agreement. This process may have been risky about five years ago when we were just looking at building it or just starting to build it. But this is now proven technology. Um, this, this project should not be a problem. Um, also, I think your big objection, which was having to support a Calian project, um, has been removed. I, I do not see any way that Caliam is likely to um abandon their desire to go for D cell. Cause I think there really is a need for water, not even on Monterey Peninsula, but a continuum need, um. You know, Salinas, Paharo Dunes, um, uh, sunny mesa, just all kinds of needs. And I think uh there will be more of that in the future. Water is not. Is not real readily available and any growth is gonna need more. I see no downside in this um agreement. I think the board should approve the general manager, sign the agreement. Um, so let's put some pressure on Paul Schudo and Pure Water Monterey to, to get a project built. And that's less than three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Susan Skilvoni. Susan, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Hi, I missed some of your early discussion. I'm sorry, but I feel like if the board feels comfortable with this, I would support it. I know there are some issues around stranded costs. I'm not sure where that's gonna go at this point. Um. But we really do want to have this water agreement. So if there's any way to make it happen at this point, I'd be happy. And I'm glad that they were able to remove some of the illegal uh future obligations for the board. So. I don't have too much more to say than that, but I know we need this water agreement and so does Cal M. And uh. I think they've worked hard to make it happen. So if the board is in agreement with this, I would support the staff recommendation and. Thank you for all your hard work in trying to make this happen. And um, we are certainly at an interesting. Time in terms of water issues locally, and I hope this one area could be resolved so we can. Pay attention to the other stuff as well. So, and thank you for all your hard work, Dave, and, and to the board. Thank you.
Next up, we have um somebody calling in. Uh, the number ending in three, one, two. Um, you will need to, you will need to um unmute yourself by pushing star six. And you may identify yourself for the clerk's record.
Uh, I'm not sure if you were referring to my number. I couldn't hear you. Zero, three, one, two?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, uh, Margaret Ann Coppernall calling in. Um, we all will rejoice. To have a consummated water purchase agreement. Uh, Cal M especially should be praising our extraordinary public agencies. For their miraculous rescue of Cal M, saving it from its C D O crisis and lifting the new meter. Uh, moratoriums. Uh, and it's great that this uh twenty E paragraph was removed uh for the future. But I still have uh questions I would appreciate clarification on. Uh, I'd like to know uh what the pertinent. Of and rationale for keeping the objectionable um D cell project information in there with the stranded. Cost demands in this water purchase agreement. I know in the past there were, you know, history, but why is it in there now? Um, you know, I think Cal M should be showing its appreciation and praise for the agency and the district for this creative. Uh, waters, uh, water supply solution. So I just, I was wondering, you know, what, are there any advantages? To going it by yourselves, or has that been dis- disregarded for any more consideration? Um, so finally, I'd like to say congratulations and high praise and honor to you. From your grateful public for your spectacular accomplishments. Um, we defer to your wisdom and uh. For your decision and actions, and we, God bless you and staff for your work. We love you and we are very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Howard Wilkins with the Marina Coast Water District. When you're ready, present your comment.
All righty, uh, good afternoon, Directors. Howard Wilkins for Marina Coast Water District. Uh, I submitted a letter a short while ago to all of you. Thanking the district for having your staff meet with us uh relating to our concerns, noting that uh. Most of our concerns were addressed primarily the elimination of twenty E and some of the contract language that was. Problematic. We, we do note that staff uh in their negotiations was, did not uh. Include some of the language we had hoped for relating to confirming uh the revised amended and restated agreement. Doesn't affect our uh M C W D's existing rights uh under contracts with M one water. However, uh, you know, with assurances from staff that it, they do not. I M C W does support the W P A, uh, as we noted in our letter, with that one reservation of confirming. On the record that this contract, that the revised W P A uh does not affect M C W D's rights. So with that, thank you. And uh, Marina Coast uh supports uh this project and looks forward to working with this board and M one water on. Other regional water projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Anna Thompson. When you're ready, Anna, please present your comment.
Uh, yes, uh, good afternoon, Anna Thompson, Carmel. I agree with the staff recommendation and please approve the restated water purchasing agreement. I appreciate all your hard work. We're, we're looking forward to getting this uh pure water monetary expansion as soon as possible. And thanks so much for all your hard work. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hand raised. I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Okay. One, one, yeah, one just went up.
All right, Melody, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thanks so much, Melody Kristlock, Public Water Now. Um, thank you to your general manager and to Monterey One's general manager for. Tirelessly negotiating this thing over the last couple of months. Um, as far as the stranded cost issue goes, I don't see that as a deal breaker. This is a fight for another day. It's probably a long way off. Everyone should realize that Caliam would first have to say uncle on the D cell. And that is not appear to be happening soon. So I see no reason not to sign this and get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll give it a few moments here. And Chair Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hand raised.
Thank you. Back to the board. Okay, um, G M, can you answer any of those questions?
Well, I, I think that um they, they've all been answered. Uh, Margaret Ann. Margaret Ann did ask why this uh section on cost recovery remained in there. Uh, just to reiterate, you know, it's a negotiation, you you win some and you lose some. Um, but I think that uh. The last speaker, Melody Chrislock, kind of covered it where it's probably a battle to be fought someday far in the future. Our chair identified that there are costs that we as a district can challenge if if we feel necessary to do so. Um, after uh August thirty-first of two thousand nineteen. And um to the other speaker's point, if D cell is still being pursued in some way, shape or form. There will be some additional expenditures that will roll into that memorandum account. So there will continue to be some cost increases. I think with this project, the the pace of spending on D cell will decline for a while. But, you know, I think it, there will be others that will pick up that ball and and fight tooth and nail over stranded costs. So this is just. Ourselves saying for the greater good, let's eat this provision, this last paragraph of section eighteen. Because we now have gotten pretty much everything else we need everywhere else in the agreement, so.
Okay, Director Malik, go ahead.
I just want to say that thank you, thank you, thank you to both Davids for your tenacity. And persistence in ability to negotiate so cleverly. Such a tough, hard fought. I don't want to call it battle, but process, so thank you both for your hard work. And your cleverness, I really appreciate it.
Okay, before we start on on our thank you, I like the move that we approved this uh MOU. This agreement, do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Vice Chair, okay, now you can start your thank yous and hallelujahs and everything, okay. Go ahead, Director Ral.
Well, this is not a thank you yet. A a leftover issue from prior uh board discussions going back a year or more. Was the bypass pipeline. Uh, is the bypass pipeline in the project description? And is it likely to be approved with this uh water purchase agreement?
Yeah, uh, yes, um, it is underway already in terms of uh putting design and bid documents together. I think uh, if I'm not mistaken, they may be uh already staging. But suffice to say that, yes, it's um. It it was part of the SEIR approval over at Monterey One Water. As we've discussed, it, you know, we see it necessary to optimize ASR. There may be some benefit to just project operations in general. Because D cell is apparently, you know, it's staying alive but not moving forward right now. Um, its purposes for the D cell project are limited uh at this point. But yes, it it will move forward.
The the reason I raised it before the thank you is that I got hammered the other night by somebody who still. He called me narrow-minded and shortsighted and a number of other things for having gotten in the way of the of the pipeline. So it was fresh in my mind with a unique, with a unique experience. But I want to thank both Davids too for persevering and keeping us informed and. I just think we've, we've, we've been, we've been on the trip with you, not in the great detail, but I think emotionally and factually. We've been uh informed and kept informed regularly, I appreciate that so much, I think that's a real challenge to a GM and a board like ours. Uh, but I I just think you've done a magnificent job and I I hope Calan can can push this along as quickly as uh we all hope. We we want it to happen, thank you.
Okay, who want to go next? Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Before I pile on with the well-deserved uh thank you, I wanted to say a word about the um. The provision on stranded costs that we all dislike. Is this a perfect agreement? No, um, is it good enough? Yes, I support it because um the most important thing is to get the expansion built at this point. And I agree with Dave Stolt, Melody Chrislock, uh, that this is a fight for another day. The stranded costs and it'll be uh some time from now. And nothing that we agree to here prevents rapers and their representatives from objecting to. Cost recovery if they if they feel that's appropriate. Um, I do want to say though that um I really, I really dislike this provision. And that the eight approximately eighty-nine million dollars of money spent through August twenty nineteen. But not counting the the pipeline that Dave Stolt mentioned, eighty-nine million dollars, that's more than the cost of the expansion. And if the rapers have to pay eighty-nine million dollars for a project that produces nothing. That they get nothing for, in addition to the cost of the expansion, which will provide water. That seems terribly unfair to me, but it is a fight for another day, we can move forward with this agreement. I think we have um. I think we've done well with the negotiations, thanks to our negotiators, a leadership of Dave Stolt. And the very good counsel and negotiating by Dave Laredo and and Fran Farina also, I want to add my thanks to her. She stepped in at certain times and also helped with the negotiations and with getting information and advice to the board. So um I I just wanted to add my thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Director Adams.
Well, of course, I think, I think everyone, I I I feel we're so fortunate to have Dave Stolt at the helm. He uh is a man of uh tremendous perseverance and uh a lot of skill. He knows what he's talking about and I think he knows that um we've got his back and my belief is that he has ours as well. Of course, all of the Dave Laredo and Fran and my colleagues on the board, everyone has just really worked so hard on this. I think the last thing I want to say is that it's just time for us to move forward. It's time now for us to really take and help spread the word of just, we've got to be responsible. And find a long-term solution for the entire county and that's my goal. And this is clearly an important part of it. Um, so I wish us all well as we begin to, as we embark on another leg of this of this journey. But um I'm very just in awe of the work that's been done and much appreciated, thank you.
All right, Director Anderson, any comments?
My comments are that I am very grateful to work with this group. And I'm grateful that we've gotten this far, I'm sorry it took so long and so much hard work. But uh. Project well done, and and I'm going to go take a nap on the couch with my dog, that's what I'm going to do.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, go ahead, then we get back to you, Director Malik.
Yes, uh, it wasn't that long ago, if you all recall, where Monterey One Water. Uh, had not uh approved the supplemental EIR for the expansion. And so that that wasn't that long ago, so to think that and with within the last year easily, if not six months. So I'm I'm thinking that we've got three entities, Calam, the Water Management District and Monterey One Water. Uh, moving in the same direction, probably everybody gave in order to make this agreement possible. And you don't always get what you want in life, of course. So again, my appreciation to the general manager, general counsel as well. And as my friend Mary said, let's just get moving on this now and let's not make any more hurdles. These three people, uh, these three entities, because this is the water for the people. D cell plant will be a discussion for another day, but D cell plant or no D cell plant, regional, private, Calam. We're going to have a lot of fun with all of those discussions, point is, we still need this expansion. It's part of the water portfolio, so I'm just very pleased that that uh it's moved this far. And the people all said amen.
Thank you, Director Malik?
Yes, uh, taken Supervisor Adams' word of spreading the word. I don't know if it's appropriate in this meeting, but I would suggest that we make banners. And we meet at the at the sidewalk of the water district. And praising the agreement and praising the people behind it and then walk it all the way to windows on the bay. And have a big celebration there. Do we need a permit, Mayor Clyde?
We'll we'll waive your permit. You might need, uh, you might need a wheelchair for me, but otherwise it sounds good.
Thank you, uh. My closing comments on this item is 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 this, we waited twenty-five years to get here. We waited twenty-five years, Keith Isarol of Monterey One Water was the one that brought this up back in the early two thousands. They finally carried out phase one, and then we found out it could be a phase two. I'm glad that Paul Schuto and him put it all together and we went there. You know, you heard the comments that I said, we don't need D cell now, we don't need it right now, but in the future, we could need it. But um we moved up a lot and taken this step because this was ready to go. We had got held up a year, but we we got ready to go. One thing I hate to do is 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 fight another day for something that I should be fighting for now. Um, stranded costs. Uh, I I don't want to leave that to another board. We should have been take care of it now, but we need to move on and move forward and I understand that. I really understand that, so that's why I'm agreeing with that stranded co- cost. Because fellow boards, other boards did agree with D cell. When me and George Riley got elected back in, what, eighteen, we started to change that a little bit. The expansion became the big project for us and we got it on board. But I like those D cell people to think about it, we have not gave up on D cell, it's a right time. Uh, Director Adams, I heard her speak, we need to have that meeting that she need to, that she said will, she like to have. On those issue of water supply for the region, I agree with her on that. So in closing, stranded costs, we need to fight for it today, but we moved it on. And I believe that's like that twenty E. You know, I shouldn't commit another board to uh say something that I approve that another board may have to carry out. So that's why I was against that, twenty E and that goes together, GM.
Uh, Director Adams is going to have to leave, so if we're going to vote, we should do it soon.
Okay. Um, roll call vote, I'll close off.
Director Riley?
Aye, aye.
Director Anderson? Director Adam?
Aye.
Aye. Going to Director Anderson? Director Robertson?
Yes.
Director Malik?
Yes.
Going back to Director Anderson, you have your mic.
Finally got it unmuted, yes, absolutely, yes.
Vice Chair Pa?
Yes.
Chair Edwards?
Yes.
The motion passes on a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, GM, we have anything else?
Uh, cocktail hour can begin.
All right, I'm starting my weekend, it might be a long one, into next Tuesday or so, okay, anything else, if not? Being adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Congratulations. Good work, Dave. Dave's.